Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing, please, for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This past week, we had a tragic set of circumstances with the untimely death of a Native American named Mr. Bear Heels, under questionable circumstances by some police officers. And I would just like for us to take a moment of silence to pray for Mr. Bear Heels and his family, as well as the Police Department and our Police Chief.
Thank you all.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Thank you all. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The Council thanks you for being here today. And as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would encourage you to either turn off or mute your electronic devices. Before we begin the major portion of our agenda today, Councilmember Pete Festerson would like to recognize a group of individuals that are in our audience today. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Actually, two recognitions today. One is, I want to recognize Mayor Black, who's here from Papillion with us today. I think he's actually here on some other business, but just want to recognize his presence in the chamber. We appreciate his public service and having him here. But then, secondly, Councilman Palermo and I spoke to a group of students that are here today as well, with Professor Paul Landau from UNO. These students are high school students from across the city. We have representatives from South, North, Central, Burke, and Northwest High Schools. So I want to welcome you here this afternoon, and thank you for your interest in city government.
Thank you all for being here.
Item six. An ordinance to rezone the property located at 10606 Burt Circle from LI Limited Industrial District to GEO General Office District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
David Black, 1215 Buckboard Boulevard, from the great city of Papillion. It's an honor to be in front of the city council and probably one of the best clerks and public works directors in the region. I am representing the applicant, Grace Life Church. We're purchasing a building at 10606 Burt. It is an office building. It was zoned LI. Religious assembly is not allowed in LI. It is allowed by Wright and GEO. The building itself is an office building. Next door was a light building that was LI that was already previously changed to GEO. Every building on the block is office in nature, and the entire area is either commercial, office, or residential. There is no light industrial in the area. So actually, we'll probably fix in an old zoning there with our application. So fairly simple. We're just asking for the request to change the zone.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
I have just motioned to approve, but I would also say I'm glad there's no hard feelings from either you or Councilman Stewie there that we stole your city clerk.
Moved and seconded to approve. Item number six. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items seven through nine relate to the same project. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 168th and Fort Streets from AG Agricultural District to R4 Single Family Residential District, high density. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, a resolution to approve a plat entitled Pier 15 located northwest of 168th and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, a resolution to approve a subdivision agreement with Pier 15 Development LLC, the Pier 15 Homeowners Association, and Sanitarium Improvement District 585.
Public hearing on agenda items seven through nine are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and the developer. With me today is John Coolidge of Lampooners and the Consulting Engineers on this project. We're really here just to answer any questions that you might have regarding this project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items seven through nine. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items seven through nine approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an application to approve a Class K liquor license for Infinity Unlimited Inc. doing business as Shamrock Pub and Grill, 5338 North 103rd Street. A is communication in opposition to the application.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Nathan Harrington, 5338 North 103rd. Business as Infinity Unlimited, doing business as Shamrock Pub and Grill.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. And it's Melton.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Harrington. And I actually, we did receive one objection to you moving to catering license from the church that's kind of up on the hill.
Right.
And I did actually speak with Captain Marcia West from Northwest Precinct, because you're just right down the street. You're right across the street almost from our Northwest Precinct. So I figured if there are any problems going on, you have probably, you're probably passed by a police car probably 100 times a day at this point.
Or more.
But the one question I do have, because you are doing, you've already done seven outdoor events in the parking lot, I think, this year. What kind of...
Five this year. This will be five tomorrow, yeah.
Okay. What kind of extra security are you going to have with kind of adding all these additional events outside? What do you do for security?
Well, this one is, is actually just bike night. So we're just bringing everybody has to be ID'd. It's 21 and over only. And then outside, actually, all we're doing is the bikes are parking out there so they can drink out there. Music and everything is inside still.
Okay. But if people can drink out in the parking lot, what are you doing for security out in the parking lot to make sure we don't have minors coming in?
We have people IDing at the, yeah, we have people IDing right at the door. Everything's roped off. So there's fencing around on the backside, and then roping all in. And then we have people, staff that's walking around outside. And then we have somebody right when you get in. And there is only one entrance to get in. So there's an entrance literally wide enough to get a bike through, and that's it. Not even a car can come through there.
Okay. But do you have somebody stationed outside at all times?
Yes.
And are you doing anything, at least, like wristbands or anything in case somebody, you know, ducks under the ropes? Do you have some minors that maybe kind of duck under...
We don't do wristbands. We can, it is, like I said, at this one, for Bike Night, it's been bikes only, 21 and only, over only, and nothing else. We have done music events outside in the past, over the last few years. When we do that, everything is wristband. And there is extra security.
Okay. So when you do the music thing, you don't do it for the bikes?
Right. But if it's music, everything is wristband. And everybody has to be above 18 even to get in. And if they're not above 18, they have to be with a parent.
Okay.
That's only for an outdoor event. Otherwise, it's got to be 18 and over only, but they are wristband. And then everybody is marked.
With a different color and all that?
Yeah. Everybody's marked on there. They do not get a wristband if they are under 21.
Okay. Now, there was also some complaints. I'm not sure the distance of where that church is. They were complaining of some noise. I can tell you that the Northwest Precinct has now got actually a noise monitor, so that they can go, actually, they have it on their iPhones, so the police can actually measure the sound to tell whether it's over or under, and they can do it right away. So they are going to be implementing that. So if there is sound...
That's fine.
They may come in and see if you're checking in. But they also said that they believe that people who are going to your establishment are parking in their parking lot and leaving garbage. Could you assure the council that...
I make sure, and actually, any time I do an event there, it's actually on the events too, that you do not park in that parking lot. Kaplan is technically up there, and they, the church is clear on the other side of the parking lot. And even the people that own the parking lot, I have their phone number. They have mine. So if anything happens, we can contact each other. They've also told me I could rent it out. The people that actually own the lot, not the building. So there's like, I don't know how many actual businesses are up there.
Right.
But everybody has their own section. And the people that own the property have actually asked me if I wanted to, that I could rent it out from them.
Okay.
But other than that, we just stay away from there. And I've talked to all the other businesses. Everybody else is good.
Okay. So I just want some assurance that you're checking on that, and that maybe after you have an event, maybe send some people over to walk over and just in case there's garbage or something, if you could just pick it up.
Yeah. It happened once, like, three or four years ago, and it wasn't even garbage. We just told them to get out of there.
Okay. No, according to Captain West, they have not gotten any calls. Everything that you've done there has been good, and we have, there's been no complaints. So at this point in time, I don't have any objection, and I move the approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 10. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 approved, seven to zero. Item 11, a request to appoint Sean A. Ruland as manager of Johnny's Italian Steakhouse LLC, doing business as Johnny's Italian Steakhouse, for their Class C liquor license location at 305 North 170th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Sean Ruland, 7917 North 155th Street, Bennington, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 11. No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 approved, seven to zero. Item 12, a request to appoint Michael J. Bodener as manager of Cantina Laredo Denver Omaha LP, doing business as Cantina Laredo, number 133, for their Class IK liquor license location at 120 South 31st Street, Suite 5107.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Michael Bodener, 18302 Dewey Avenue in Elkhorn.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 12. No lights. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 approved, seven to zero. Item 13, a request to appoint Thomas J. Perina as manager of Godfather's Pizza Inc. for their Class A liquor license locations at Godfather's Pizza, 2117 South 67th Street, and Godfather's Pizza, number 28033, 3141 North 108th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Thomas J. Perina, 4026 South 38th Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 approved, seven to zero. Item 14, a request to appoint Nicholas W. Wernicki as manager of Quick Shop Inc. for their Class D liquor license locations at Quick Shop, number 640, 3606 Leavenworth Street, Quick Shop, number 653, 5929 North 72nd Street, Quick Shop, number 657, 7525 Cass Street, Quick Shop, number 673, 5306 North 103rd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Nicholas Wernicki, District Manager, Quick Shop, 8942 Blondo Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 through 21 were held on June 6, 2017. Mr. Festerson?
I just thought, Mr. President, I think these items will all get approved here in a minute, but I see Jack Deason in the audience. I don't know if you wanted to just talk about number 21 a little bit, since the College World Series is here, and his, any highlights for us this year to expect?
Good afternoon, John D. Deason, Jr., 9709 Pinehurst Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. Yeah, as part of the agreement we have with the NCA and the tri-party agreement with the city and Mecca, every five years, there's a review of the key terms of the agreement to see what we need to do, if anything, to make sure that the agreement continues to perform as we all want it to. And we had a meeting in February with the NCA, and really, the only thing that came up was the importance of maintaining the stadium in the fashion in which the national championship, or in a condition in which the national championship is appropriate. And it was determined that it made sense, long-term, for long-term planning, to increase the capital reserve replacement fund from $500,000, which is under the current term, to $800,000 in 2017, and then a million one from then forward. And then the city's share of the excess funds, instead of going into the city reserve fund, would be added on top of that. Actually, the reserve fund was originally created when we did the contract, let's see, that had been about 10 years ago, so that we had money set aside to do things at the stadium. So really, we're just, the city's just allocating the monies that were being set aside in the reserve fund to go towards the capital repair and replacement fund, which Mecca provided a bunch of background information to show it. Over the next number of years, there was a significant amount of money that needed to be spent. If we didn't do this, we wouldn't have enough money there. So this pretty much puts the city and Mecca and College World Series Inc. in a position to maintain the stadium in accordance with the capital improvement plan that Mecca has on file.
Thanks. And we did talk about it a little bit last week, along these lines, and I assume you'd agree that these reserve funds are in a good position at this point, given what you see coming down the road, or is there a list of projects you see coming to the stadium we need to be aware of soon?
Well, over the next five years, there's a list of projects, and we're in really good shape to be able to take care of those with the, with this amount of money set aside. And actually, the way the agreement reads is the amount of monies will be set aside up to a maximum of $15 million. So over the next so many years, we'll have up to $15 million, depending upon how much is spent to take care of the, I guess what I'd say is the normal capital repair and replacement of a facility like Didi Ameritrade. So we should be in really good shape.
I think you said it was $800,000 from the city in '17, which I think is right. And then did you say 1.1 million in '18 is what's...
Yeah. The capital repair and replacement fund in 2017 will be $800,000 plus the city's share of the excess funds from the waterfall.
Okay.
Which is approximately $300,000. In 2018, it'll be a million one plus the city's share of the excess funds. So...
Okay. And as we talked last week with Mr. Curtis, the stadiums, the Ameritrade Stadium is performing as it should, and it's still in the black. Is that your perspective as well?
Yes, sir.
Yep. We appreciate that. Appreciate your service and all your family has done for this event. And I know we're all excited to see some games this weekend. And I know we've adopted some new security measures too, which I think are important. So we'd appreciate all you've done for it and your ongoing participation.
Thank you very much for your support. Appreciate it.
Mr. Harding.
Yes. Actually, on item number 20, I just wanted to, which is in regards to the fifth precinct for the Omaha Police Department, just wanted to thank the administration for moving this item forward. Public safety is the number-one issue and priority for the city. And glad to see, not only for the residents of Elkhorn and West Omaha, actually for all Omaha, I think we all look forward to the day when this opens.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Moved and seconded to approve items 15 through 21. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 through 21 approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 22 through 40 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Hello, everyone. Willie Hamilton, item 40, the resolution. Are there any questions, or do I have to go into details?
Well, I think, Mr. Hamilton, I think you've got a couple, at least one event coming up that I think you probably want to tell people about. And, you know, just a little bit of background of what this is about and what the, what the event that's coming up, I believe, in July is.
July 12 through 14. A little bit about, a few years back, Cameron Gales worked with Cities United, along with Empowerment Network, the Urban League, Conde Black Men, and others to work around black male achievement, children of color, and the disparities that exist. So I've been working with the campaign for black male achievement for the last six years. And we really have an opportunity to put Omaha as a spotlight, if you will, around black male achievement and children of color. July 12 through the 14th, in Omaha, Nebraska, we have folks coming from Baltimore, Louisville, Chicago, Atlanta, New York. And we have a lot of folks here who are doing workshops from DMC, JDAI, Housing, Empowerment Network, Voices for Children, and I can go on and on. But the whole premise, it's a collective work that's being done. And also, next year, 2018, we're actually bringing a national conference here to Omaha to talk about all the good work that's being done with the YS, again, to the organization I just mentioned above. So I went to the senators' legislative. They actually issued a resolution. Chris Rogers, Mary Borgeson, big supporters as well, Councilman Gray, Chris Jerem, Pete Festerson, I approached these guys. They jumped on board as well. So it's really about a collective work and how we can work together to really improve when it comes to black male achievement and children of color.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Question.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Harding has his light on.
I'm sorry. Did we get a site that was not specifically mentioned? Did we get more information on 28 as to the site? Chris, Hoot Seymour's house? Okay. Thank you.
Is there a roll call?
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 22 through 40 approved, seven to zero. Item 41, a resolution to approve amendments to the 2013 to 2017 five-year strategy in fiscal years 2014 and 2016 Omaha Council Bluffs Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs.
Public hearing on agenda item number 41 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bill Lucash, City of Omaha, Planning Department, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Lucash, if I could just engage a little bit on some of the conversation we had this morning.
Sure.
So this is the city's Community Development Block Grant program, usually a five-year strategy, but this is a one-year extension, which is kind of unusual, but I think with good reason. Could you explain that a little bit?
Correct. So we are coordinating our five-year consolidated plan to match up with the affordably furthering fair housing initiative that the city is required to, excuse me, complete. HUD is requiring that. We are also syncing up with other communities in the region, such as Bellevue, Papillion, whoever else is doing a, I think Fremont is involved in that, that is required to be part of this initiative, the AFFH initiative. So the one-year extension puts us all together and puts us on, puts us on path on a course with AFFH and consolidated plans.
Okay. And I think we were all briefed this morning to an effort through MAPPA, and I think together with the Planning Department, to engage that strategy in public hearings over the summer, and...
Correct. Yes.
That would be of benefit, too. Also, as part of this, though, there are some amendments to the program of work. The most notable, I think, is $400,000 to the Vinton Street Business District for a lighting project there, correct?
Correct. There'll be 60 acorn lights along Vinton Street between 15th and 20th Street.
Which I think is a great addition, and another example of a great neighborhood business district that has a great future. And I think Councilman Palermo might have some more questions about that one here in a minute. My last two questions were, some of the funding, though, comes from line items that were otherwise going to 75 North Project, but we've determined that's not a problem, that that's being sourced from other funds as well.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. That's an important one, too. And then lastly, I don't know if it's for you or maybe Mr. Curtis, but also in this document, there's funding each year, $300,000 for the Step Up Program with the Empowerment Network, which we think is important. And I know we all think is important, and going forward, will stay that way. I think we've also committed to increase that funding, though, to $1 million per year. That has not changed in this document, so I presume that change will come in the general fund, presumably through the budget this season. Is that a correct assumption, Mr. Curtis?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. That is my understanding of how that'll occur. The budget's not finished yet, but yeah, that is consistent with what I've been told.
Okay. Thank you.
There are no further lights. Chairman, Mr. Palermo.
Just from my understanding, this project is going to be as soon as possible, I believe, we spoke about earlier.
Right. So I did go back. I talked to staff. We did some research. The next step, if funding is approved, is that we will talk to OPPD about the engineering studies that need to be done, start working with public works to make sure that we are on the same page, and start moving forward with the bidding and construction effort and everything that needs to take place as a next step.
Okay. Thank you. And just in closing, I'd like to add that this area is going to be very welcome to this, not just the businesses, but the residents also. So thank you for your good work.
Well, thank you. And I guess a thanks to David Thomas and James Still for their initiative here. Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve item 41. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 41 approved, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7D, the public hearings on agenda items 42 through 56 shall be held on the third reading. Item 57, an ordinance to vacate a portion of the East-West Alley adjacent to South 31st Street between Mason and Marcy Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 57 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 58, an ordinance to designate the Joel and Cornish Residence located at 1009 Williams Street as a landmark. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 58 is today. Proponents, please.
Regina Basili, 623 South 56. I'm the owner of the Joel and Cornish Mansion.
Thank you. Did you have any other comments?
No.
Okay.
In support of the landmark designation.
In support of the landmark designation. Okay. Ms. Arnie?
Okay, thanks. Arnie Breslow, 5528 Emly. I am president of the Old Market South Neighborhood Association. There's been a lot of work done on these two projects to get them up to a standard that the city likes, and feel that these two projects, along with the church across the two churches across the street, give us four historical monuments at that intersection, and will help maintain the neighborhood in the character of what it once had. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just think it's important to put a little more highlighting on the importance of these designations, because as the, as you call it, our eight districts, 108, 68108 area in Little Italy and going west now to Little Bohemia, has experienced so much redevelopment, it's important to have diversity of architecture, particularly in the preservation area. And so with this one and the next one to come, this is a very, very good opportunity. We should not miss. And it'll keep the neighborhood unique and appealing, and why so many people find it desirable and want to move there. So tip of the cap to you for your commitment here, and to those who have helped you come from the application process and planning. I think I saw Trina Westman here, and I thought I saw her. She's Chris... I think I saw Trina Westman here, and I thought I saw there, she's Christine Gerber, too. So thank you to them as well.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Next item.
Item fifty-nine, an ordinance to designate the Bishop George Worthington Residence located at 1240 South 10th Street as a landmark. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-nine is today. Proponents, please.
Regina Basili, 623 South 56th. I'm the owner of the Bishop George Worthington Residence, and in support of the local landmarking designation.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Arnie Breslow, with Old Market South Neighborhood Association, 5528 Emly is my resident. We are fully in support of this project also.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty, an ordinance to approve the addition of employment classifications for traffic signal supervisor one and traffic signal supervisor two.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-one, an ordinance to approve the addition of an employment classification for assistant visitor services manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-two, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Women's Center for Advancement in the amount of $163,994 to provide funding for one full-time victim advocate and one part-time victim advocate.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-three, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, Douglas County Administrative Office in the amount of $192,274 to provide funding for law enforcement equipment, corrections, crisis intervention team training, prosecutor programs, and technology improvements and training.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-four, an ordinance to approve a contract with Elevon, Inc. for merchant card services.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-five, an ordinance transferring funds from the unencumbered balances in the 2016 general fund budget of the City of Omaha, 2016, year-end closing.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Wanted to engage Finance Director Curtis here in a conversation about this, I guess as the former Finance Committee Chair, as of last week. But this is an important ordinance as it applies to our finances and the budget going forward, so just a brief conversation with you. So what this is, is something we typically get each year about this time, which is the balance forward from last year's budget that must be, cannot be spent for two years. So this will be forwarded until 2018, correct?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. That's correct.
And in doing so, you've put some money, I think wisely so, aside for the contingent liability reserve fund and the cash reserve fund, and also some smaller projects in the capital improvement fund. But then this is also where we're getting the $5 million one-time boost to our street resurfacing program, right?
That's correct. And remember, we closed out the wage adjustment, which you may be getting, too, because we got the contracts finalized. So that put an additional 8.3 million, I want to say, into the sixteen final.
And when we close out that wage adjustment account, that's a separate item coming later?
I don't know about a separate item coming later. It's a lapsed encumbrance, so it comes into the lapsed encumbrance and becomes part of the close for sixteen.
Okay. So by function of approving this, I guess next week, that will have been accomplished?
Yes.
But you're keeping about a million or $2 in there for, until the wage, the wages and the contracts are fully implemented to make sure you have what you need. Is that correct?
That's correct. We were waiting to see what the obligations, if any, that we have related to the new health care plan for police, just to make sure we had any upfront funding covered, in case there wasn't any.
Okay. And so the end result is $11 million is forwarded to the 2018 budget, so something you can consider in your budget formulation that you're going through right now.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Mr. Stube, just a quick interaction with you, too, along those lines. So this morning, we talked a little bit about the $5 million to streets and how that's not determined yet in terms of where that's going for projects, but it will go to neighborhood and major street resurfacing yet this year, right?
Bob Stube, Polywork, yes, that is correct. We're currently going through that development of those street segments, evaluating them, and that should be advertised. If it's not yet, it will be in the very, very near future.
Okay. So in a matter of weeks, we'll kind of have that list of projects?
That is correct.
Okay. That's welcome, given all the feedback we've had on streets, and I think all of us having an interest in doing more in that respect, and think it's tremendously needed. And along those lines, on a bit different topic, I wanted to engage you on this, too, because we talked about it this morning also. The observation was, $11 million, which this ordinance forwards to the next budget, is also about the same amount of money that we currently have been paying to OPBD for things like street lighting, but also the leasing of street poles, the administration, the customer service that comes with that, that appears in our budget every year as well. About $12 million is what that amounts to. This has been about $11 million. But also the interest in, in how that works. So there's kind of two, two issues there from my perspective. One is currently, we have street and highway funding of about $12 million paying OPBD for those, for that purpose. There was a period of time when we were backing that out with general fund money, so that street and highway funds could then be used for additional road projects. And I think that's my main interest in bringing this up, because I believe this would be an opportunity to keep doing that in this next budget as part of maybe a larger solution as we think about our street needs. So let me first ask you to respond to that, if you would.
Bob Stube, Polyworks, yeah. We expand in the budget about $12 million on an annual basis for streetlights. And I think a little bit less than 20% of that is actually the power component. So we are leasing those streetlights from OPBD, and they provide multiple services to us related to that, which includes customer service, administration. They handle all the maintenance, whether it's changing out the lights themselves, or if there's a knockdown of a streetlight pole, or also when it comes to street projects where poles might have to be relocated. All of that falls under that existing agreement that we have with OPBD.
And so to me, the low-hanging fruit in this next budget to help our street situation is this item. If we thought about continuing to back out of, of that with street and highway funds to streets and general fund surpluses like we have today, to pay for those costs in the meantime. But there's also a larger or a more long-term perspective on this issue that you're currently working on as well, and in discussions with OPBD about. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, we've had discussions with OPBD now for a number of years related to that particular asset that they own. And there's no question that we have concerns with regard to the cost to the city related to essentially leasing that system. And so we've hired an outside consultant to essentially look at the potential for the city to, to own those particular assets, and then the city would have to manage all those things that are currently being done by OPBD. Now, that doesn't necessarily prevent the city in the future from contracting with OPBD to provide some of those services that they're currently doing today, such as, you know, the call center, or doing knockdowns, or things like that. And so we, like I said, we are in the process of evaluating that, looking at that potential for us to take over that ownership. And so there's a number of things that come into play, essentially. One is establishing what the value of that particular asset is, and then also considering what those long-term operation maintenance costs would be if the city did own that particular asset.
I know it's a complicated equation with all those items, but how would you characterize the timeframe of the study, or some kind of conclusion to it?
Well, the consultant that we currently have on board today is actually communicating with OPBD, and we met with that particular individual about, I think about a month or a month and a half ago. They are currently, again, reviewing all the information that the consultant needs in order to be able to come back to us with a recommendation with regard to steps moving forward.
So, you know, by the end of the year, or how would you characterize?
Yeah, we would, we would anticipate probably within the next few months, hopefully, that we will have some information that we could at least evaluate what those recommendations are.
Okay. And then the conclusion is, you know, if that was the direction that was recommended, or if there was a means to pursue, there's potentially another $12 million or so that could be put back into streets as a result of executing that strategy, right?
Well, keep in mind is that, as I mentioned previously, about a little, about 20% would be related to power, so that, that will not go away as a cost. The other thing would be is that what are those costs associated with the things that currently are built into that lease agreement that we have with OPBD? So we do not anticipate that we will be eliminating 80% of that $12 million. Obviously, there will be costs associated with managing that system and handling knockdowns, and then any costs associated with, with relocation-type activities.
Okay. But it'd be several million dollars to the good in terms of our street issue?
Yes, that's what we anticipate.
Yeah. I think that'd be my interest, so I, I'll wait for the, of course, for the conclusion of the study, but I think that's something that we should be pursuing. And it's been one of my pet peeves that street and highway funds have been paying for these, these items as opposed to general fund or other means of payment, when I think that could be used for our streets more productively. So thanks for that dialogue.
You're welcome. Thank you. There are no further lights. Next item.
Item sixty-six, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing loan agreement with Vicino Natural Bridge, LLC to implement the MUSE tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for a project site located northeast of 20th and Izzard Streets.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-seven, an ordinance to necessitate the use of city property located at 1414, 1418, and 1424 Sherwood Avenue, 1725 Lake Street, and 2629 North 15th Street for use as a site for implementing the Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs Fiscal Year 2015 Action Plan.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-eight, an ordinance to necessitate the use of city property located within the north revitalization strategy area for use as a site for implementing the Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs Fiscal Year 2016 Action Plan.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-nine, general purpose financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2016, and independent auditors' report for the Land Reutilization Commission of Douglas County. No action needs to be taken on this. This item will be placed on file in the City Clerk's Office. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda item seventy shall be held on the second reading.
Motion adjourned. Moving seconded to adjourn. No further lights. Roll, oh.
Jerem.
Festerson?
Yes.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting adjourned at 2:43 PM.